And first thing on the agenda will be approval of the minute for July 11.
We would like to move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second, can you pull the board?
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Frew?
Hi.
Mr. Flas?
Hi.
Mr. Herman?
Hi.
Chair Hetrick?
Hi. And we'll open tonight, we have a public hearing for Shereev Villam Temple on East River Road. Is Larry here?
I am here.
Once again, we're here for a height variance.
I'm moving.
Shereev Villam plans to build a new temple following traditional Hindu architectural. The ridge is proposed at forty-two feet. The tallest tower will be sixty-five feet. Town code has a maximum height of thirty-five feet. And with that, the Rush Department has no problem with that. Couple of Rush departments. The Rush Conservation Board application review has no problem. I have the Department of Planning and Development from Monroe County. General referring to development. According to their comments.
Everybody's muted, aren't they?
Shelley's not muted.
Huh?
Shelley isn't muted, you're in the same room.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
According to the flood boundary and floodway map published by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, this site may be located within the federal flood insurance program one hundred year flood plain boundary. The municipality permitted administrator should be satisfied that the proposed development will meet the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program in order for the municipality to maintain eligibility in the program and for the applicant to obtain flood insurance. According to New York State Department Environmental Conservation, the New York DEC and the United States Geological Survey, National Hydraulic Descent, USGS, I don't know. It appears that the portion of a stream is located in the subject property. Stream sides, sometimes called repeter zones or stream corridors, are the length between land and water and the health of the stream depends on a large part of the condition of the stream side. Research has shown that natural vegetation corridors along streams perform numerous. Service is essential for human health and welfare. Healthy stream corridors can reduce flooding downstream. Trap sediment, remove dissolved contaminants, provide shade, contribute leaf matter important for insect food and fish habitat, provide wildlife habitat, offer recreational opportunities and increase value desirable of the property. In order to protect the stream corridor, mitigate potential flood impacts and downstream properties and prevent means from entering the contaminants from entering the stream, consider the following. Maintain a healthy vegetative streamside buffer for preserving trees, shrubs, along with stream edges. Limit tree cutting to removal of large branches that fall into the stream and divert stream flow and cause erosion. Minimize canalizing stream flows through the streamside buffer to filter contaminants and reduce erosion. Reduce impervious areas near the stream and where necessary, use stone or brick instead of pavement and concrete for driveways and walkways. Expute vehicles, livestock, and excessive pedestrian traffic. Reduce or eliminate buffer area. Exposure to fertilizer, herbicides, pesticides, animal waste and household and animal chemicals, trash debris, piles of leaf litter. Maintain septic systems. Says if you have any questions regarding review, please contact me. That was Monroe County Planning and Development. Bear with me here. Do you have anything to add, Larry?
Well, I can address that county comment. The, this project is five hundred feet away from Railroad Creek. Five hundred feet. And it's up around elevation six hundred twenty-five. Railroad Creek is five hundred ninety-four. So, we're thirty-one feet above the creek, five hundred feet away. The temple youth hall is the easternmost building on the campus and that's two hundred forty feet away from the stream. So, we're not going to be anywhere as close to the stream. We're going to be out on the lawn area. And what you just read is all good stuff, but they cut and paste it into every review they do.
Okay.
Sometimes they do mention that there's some dairy operation within a thousand feet, but they didn't do that this time.
All right. And John, if I'm, if I'm correct, we did the receipt, the seeker and read that at last meeting?
Correct. Board issued a negative declaration, but we had to adjourn the rest of this to redo the public, the notice of public hearing on the variance application.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments on this public hearing? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing on application twenty twenty dash zero two Z. Next up is the Ann Stewart application, twenty twenty dash three Z. Ann Stewart was requesting a front setback variance.
Chairman Hetrick, before you, before you move on, the deputy clerk should just pull the board to close the public hearing.
Okay. Pull the board.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Frew? Mr. Herman?
Hi.
Mr. Flas?
Hi.
Chair Hetrick?
Hi. Let me get rid of that. Okay, I'll open the public hearing for Ann Stewart, application twenty twenty dash zero three Z. She's looking for a request of a front setback variance for a proposed barn. Location does not comply with one twenty dash eighteen of the Rush Town Code. Property is located at eight zero one five West Henry Road and is zone residential R thirty. I have an application for this. I have. There was, we had a meeting last month and talking with her Elizabeth, I believe. Yes, Elizabeth, there was in question of Elizabeth having power of attorney. And she does have a power of attorney for Ann Stewart.
Can you hear me okay?
Mr. Vol.
Can you hear me, John Google?
Yes.
Okay, I'm having problems with my computer, so I can see you, but I can't, for some reason, the auto doesn't, audio doesn't work, so I'm on my phone now.
Okay.
I represent Ann Stewart, I'm an attorney in Dan's, so I represent Ann Stewart.
Okay. The application that was put in for a variance, there was a permit issued to start construction. And during the process of the construction, work had started, they discovered that the building was being built in the setback, the hundred and ten foot setback. There was a verbal stop work order. I've looked at town records, I can't find anything that was officially sent to Ann Stewart on a stop work order and then the work continued on. And the way I, driving by, it's pretty much completed. Would you say that's right, John?
That's right, it's, other than pouring concrete for the floor and the electrical of the building is up.
Right. So, they've applied for a variance after the fact that it was a permit issued. One of the things we're looking at, this wasn't a self-created issue. Part of the problem is, is that it's asking for a hundred percent of relief. And according to the records, it's only forty-three feet from the center line. There's a little bit of a downhill grade there and a guard rail. One of the issues we have is that it could be, it could be a dangerous situation there. You know what? One of the things we consider is whether it's an undesirable change. You know, from what I understand is she really didn't create this. We've looked at the drawings. Somebody misconstrued a hundred and seventeen feet setback, the way it was set up. Do you have any comments, John?
Yes, there was a permit that was granted back in November twelfth, two thousand nineteen. The written stop work order was not issued until June seventeenth, two thousand twenty and your code does require any notices from the code enforcement officer to be in writing and served either on the owner or agent of the owner. And at that point, certainly the work had been primarily done. I took some pictures, I was actually at the site, I took some pictures, they're on my phone, I can email them. I'm not a technological genius, but I think I can get them to the zoning board of appeals. Potentially, possibly, maybe a hazard, but there is a guard rail there, there's a series of trees there. I mean, I really don't see it as a significant risk. It's not totally flat there, the way the building's constructed, the, it's actually a little bit lower than the road. There are a number of factors in the zoning law and basically it parrots the statute. The statute says whether there's an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. Of course, at this point, it's, like you say, it's after the fact. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, whether the proposed variance conditions of the neighborhood or district and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. In this particular case, the daughter of Ann Stewart, Elizabeth Distasio, has gotten an estimate as to what it would cost to demolish the building. Actually, the cost of demolition would be pretty much close to what it costs to build it in the first place. It would cost over twenty-three thousand dollars to tear this building down. And if it was reconstructed, there would be some trees that would have to be cut down as well and the cost of removing those trees is not included in the estimate. Elizabeth did contact the New York State Department of Transportation, they have no problem. I have an email that says they have no problem with the building being located where it is. And as I said, it's, other than the concrete on the floor and the electrical, it's, basically, it's completed. We submit that, that the owner, Ann Stewart, and the Elizabeth Distasio and her brother, Michael Stewart, have a vested right here. They relied on the issuance of the permit, even though it might have been improperly given in the first instance, nobody knew that at the time, that they have vested rights, that the town should be really stopped at this point from denying the use variance. If they relied upon the building permit and they built that building accordingly. So, we're respectfully requesting that the board grant the area variance that would allow the building to stay where it is.
Okay. Yeah, because there's, like you said, the, one of the things that I see here, it really is being so close to the road is not really in character of the neighborhood. Everything else is setback a hundred and ten feet from the road, pretty much, not all of them, but a lot of them. You know, is there, I mean, is it beneficial, you know, sought by the applicant, you know, can it be achieved by another method and stuff? These are all things that we go by before they build. Looking at the print, I see that some of the, most of the drainage or a lot of it runs right down to that building. And you're asking for better than a hundred percent of a relief.
Well, if a variance was granted, I think the variance could address the drainage issue if that's a concern also. There would be no problem with the applicant agreeing that if the building was ever destroyed, it would not be rebuilt on the same footprint. In other words, it would be built on.
You know, there's also a safety issue, like I said, it's on a hill, guardrails, you know, they plow snow up through there and stuff like that. I wouldn't want to see him throw snow and throw ice and stuff on that building, being so close. Anybody else have any more comments?
Hey Shelley, do you see that, the chat that says, will there be a chance for neighbors to comment? Okay, is there a chance for that, Lee?
Yeah, it will be.
Okay, all right. Did you get that, Richard? R Franklin, I mean, I'm assuming it's Richard?
Yes.
Okay.
My wife and I built our property on eighty-fourty West Henry Road in nineteen eighty-four. We abided by all the codes that the town had for us to the letter. I strongly oppose that building being there. When I look out my window, when I used to see greenery and trees, now I see a big red roof and a big red back end of siding. Now, I want to call your attention. They're just down north of a bit, on the same side of the road. There was a man who built a house on a slab. I know this man. And because that house was in violation of the code, he was forced to remove enough of the house in order to make it to code. He took that loss and made the house useless and it's still sitting there, never been lived in. I object to whatever thinking that a person can do to think that they can go ahead and disregard the codes of the town. When I put my side building on, the side garage, the present supervisor was the building inspector. He was here to see the foundation. He was here to see the foundation after it was laid. He was here to see the wall done and the proper filling up of the, of the blocks. Then he gave us a bridge. I strongly object to a person taking upon themselves to think that they can force this upon the town.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Okay.
I would like to speak. I'm Elizabeth Distasio, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I hear what he's saying, okay? Don't get me wrong. I did not take this upon myself to do it, okay? So, yeah, I hear what he's saying. But we relied upon the building inspector. I, my mother applied for the permit, okay? And the building inspector did not come out and look at anything. He gave the okay. So, I didn't, we did not take this upon ourselves to disrespect town. We went by what the town said, they issued the permit, we thought we were good to go. So, he's wrong in saying that we took it upon ourselves. We did not take it upon ourselves to disrespect the codes or anything. I mean, not for nothing, the people of Town of Rush pay money for a building inspector. And if that building inspector can't do his job, why are you blaming the people of the Town of Rush? I took offense to what he said, that's just me. There was no disrespect. Had the building inspector come out and looked at the job and said, hey, I was, I was out of line, we would have stopped everything. I would have said, okay, we got to move it. So, no. I hear what he's saying, but I disagree with him because I did not. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. If I have to be the building inspector of the Town of Rush, why are we paying him? I rely on him to know the laws and he did nothing, he did nothing. Until when we started building, he come down and said, oh, you got to stop building because you're out of compliance. And my point is, I handed you a site map, I didn't, I did not deviate, did not deviate from the plans. And I asked, at the time I issued for the permit, do I need to have a hearing? I was told no. I was ready to comply by the Town of Rush. So, yeah, I take offense to him because, yeah, my parents had this house built and yes, we originally had Jerry as, as the building inspector and he kept my parents right to the, right to the letter of the law and we had no issue with that. No, he's saying that I just went willy-nilly and built it, no. I did not. I did everything up front nicely. And for him to say that I'm doing what I want to do, I take offense to that because I did not do what I want to do. And I think he's wrong, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Anybody, anybody else out there?
I would like to rebut.
Go ahead.
Two wrongs don't make a right.
Oh, dang.
If the building inspector gave wrong information, he's as much as a fool. I'm not blaming the town nor its people. I'm saying that this, in this case, is the gross negligence of justice. I have nothing to burden or gripe about you folks. I believe in doing what's right down the road all the time. That's where I stand.
Thank you.
And can I rebut to him?
Go ahead.
I hear what, I hear what he's saying and I can respect that. But he's not the person that's got to come up with the twenty thousand, over twenty thousand dollars to remove something that was a big mistake. And that's all I got to say, I just, you know, yes. I hear what he's saying, but the town made a major mistake. And people are looking for us to correct that mistake at twenty-something thousand dollars. I just think it's wrong, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I've been in the street for a long time and I've had opportunities to run into situations where rules were not followed. I believe the value of my property is reduced by that building. And so, that's where I stand. I, it's a gross discharge of, false discharge of justice.
Okay, thank you. John, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I mean, I think what's important here is a building permit was granted by the then code enforcement officer back in November. The building was put up and the stop work order was not issued until June of this year after the building was substantially completed. So, it's, it's really unfair to Ann Stewart to say, well, now you've got to tear it down, we were wrong before. I mean, my, my client relied on that building permit, the building was put up accordingly. It could have, it would be very, very simple to nip this in the bud, but it didn't happen that way. And in reliance on what the town was doing and the issuance of the permit, the building was put up. So, she relied on it, it's up and, you know, and it's, it's not an unattractive building at all.
Okay, thank you. Can you, could you send those pictures that you've got to the town?
Sure, well.
When you, when you get time, you can send them tomorrow.
Okay, what, what email, should I email them or text them?
Email them.
To the deputy clerk, is it Shelley@TownOfRush.com?
Shelley, S-H-E-L-L-Y?
EY.
At TownOfRush.com?
L-L-E-Y@TownOfRush.com.
Okay. Mr. Mancuso, do you want to copy as well?
That'd be great, thank you.
And what's your email?
I think you emailed me today, but it's J. Mancuso, M-A-N-C-U-S-O, at WMBP LLC.
Okay.
Dot com.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, John.
Lee, could I add something?
Sure.
Lee?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't have a dog in this fight, but what I did hear is a big red barn. Sounds like it's very close to the road. If, I've always been fond of sugar maples along old country roads and some type of tree planting, whether it's that or honey locusts to buffer the big red wall or whatever it is, might be part of a solution. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Trees soften things.
All right. Anybody else? Then I would close the public hearing. Shelley, will you pull?
Mr. Frew? Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Herman?
Hi.
Mr. Flas?
Hi.
Chair Hetrick?
Hi. Next up is Charles and Linda Kemper, Kemper?
Kiper.
Kiper? On behalf of Daniel and Lindsay, requesting an area variance for 50 Stony Brook Road, Rush, New York, 14543. The proposed project is a 1,017 square foot, one bedroom in-law suite. Is an additional 217 feet above town code. Get my paperwork out here. And I've got a lot of it on this one. 2020 dash 04Z. The proposed project is a 1,017 square foot, one bedroom in-law suite for Charles and Mindy Kemper parents. You are 217 feet above the code. There seems to be a lot of question with the planning board on some of their restrictions or whatever, I guess. I've been getting a lot of things back. Something about verbiage, John?
Yes, so this particular applicant, given the square footage of the accessory apartment, in-law apartment, is going to require both a variance from the zoning board of appeals and a permit from the planning board. The issues associated with the verbiage and the code and the affidavit that's required by the code is an issue for the planning board and that is being addressed. It will likely be addressed at such time as this applicant goes back to the planning board. Should this board grant a variance for the square footage requirements? Because they are proposing an accessory apartment above the square footage requirements of the code. So this is the first step. The affidavit speaks to the planning board's jurisdiction. So this board just needs to focus on the square footage.
Right. Will that verbiage change anything to do with the zoning on square footage?
It will not, no. That affidavit is is has some issues associated with conditional use permitting and some other code requirements. I'm working with the planning board in addressing those issues. But the affidavit will not speak to the square footage. That will be solely based on whatever this board decides with respect to the variance.
Okay, because part of it that I saw was there was something about the permit was like three years or something and renewable or how would that affect the zoning then if we gave a variance? Say we were to give a variance for it, would we have to also put a contingency in there to go with that three-year permit?
If the board wanted to condition the variance as running co-extensive with the with the time limitations on any permit issued by the planning board with respect to approval of the accessory apartment, you could do that. I would just make sure your approval and the time limits associated with that are consistent with whatever the planning board ends up doing. If that's what you wish to do or if you wish to follow the, if you wish to just impose that requirement as a condition, you can do that.
Because usually when we give a variance, it goes with the property owner or whatever, okay? And say we give it and they, let's say they lose their permit in three years, does that variance still hold?
The square, yeah, I mean, the variance typically variances will run with the land. And so if you issue a variance, it usually doesn't have a time limit associated with it. As a practical matter, if something were to expire because another board issued an approval, that variance would really not be operative until they went back to the planning board to then address those concerns. But your variance would be, your variance can just run with the land. And so if the in-law apartment exists and it's permitted per the other board, you don't need to reconvene to have another variance granted on the same issue again.
Okay, thank you. Rush Fire Department, their comment was, they reviewed the application. We do not have any issues or concerns, excuse me, with this application. Monroe County Department of Planning. Says their comments, the applicants are encouraged to contact other county departments or non-county agencies to ensure all permitting requirements for this project have been satisfied. That's all I got from Monroe County Planning. I don't think I got anything from Conservation Board. Okay, Conservation Board, yeah, we've reviewed it and they have no comment at this time. Yep, we got the fire department, got the county, we got all of them. Any comments from the audience?
Am I of the audience?
Yes, you are.
I I guess all I have to say, I'm Charlie Kuiper, by the way. Our intention was to buy by the code and we worked extensively with the former building inspector to develop this, what I'm calling an in-law suite, over, gosh, almost a year. I I sent him stuff, I talked to him and I thought we were going along the right path. And not only did I spend a lot of money doing it. So here we are, unfortunately, you know, more fortunately, Doug's gone and and Rick, excuse me, Tracy is in his place. And he brought up the the town code on accessory apartments, which seems to apply. But, you know, again, our intent is was not to flunk anything. It was to conform and keep everybody informed of of our intentions. So I I believe there's no substantial change to the neighborhood. I believe that being over 750 feet from the road, there's virtually no impact for this project, other than giving my wife and I a place to live with our kids. And with that, I'll let it go.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie, Charlie, hey, Lee, can I ask a question of Charlie while he's on that? Charlie, I'm looking at the floor plan, which is labeled at the top of the plot sheet for key homes.
Okay, yeah.
Can you kind, can you kind of walk me through that floor plan? I mean, it's evident that there's the living room window, the kitchen window in the in the one square to the left. What is the, what is the the building or part of the property that's to the right that's got a 712 in the middle?
I hate to be low tech here, but is this what you're looking at? This is, okay, yes.
Yes, yep. So the far right side, it looks like a driveway leading up. Is that a garage?
That's a single car, a single car garage, correct.
And is that being counted in in that square footage of the 1,017 square feet? Or is that strictly the the house unit or addition?
The 1,017 is strictly the house, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other comments? With that, I will close public hearing. 2020 dash 4Z.
Deputy clerk, can you poll the board?
Mr. Blue? Mr. Anderson? Mr. Herman?
Hi.
Mr. Flash?
Hi.
Hi. Next on the agenda is 2020 dash 5Z. David Flash requesting a fence permit variance for 77 Rush, West Rush Road, 14543. The current town code allows a maximum of four feet. The applicant proposes a six-foot height. You're going to represent yourself, Dan?
I'm going to represent myself and I officially recuse myself from participating as a zoning board member at this point.
Yes, if you could, for the record, that would be great.
Says here you want six-foot high fence, approximately 112 feet total, four sections. Is that correct?
That was out, there's been a slight revision to that. If you look at the, you have the diagram?
Yes.
And the it would be the eastern section where there were three panels in a row. We're taking out the the southernmost of those panels, so there'll be one fewer eight-foot section, so the total is 104 feet.
Can, Rich, can you unmute yourself here?
I think it's here. I think it's this one that he's taken out.
Oh, okay.
He said the east, southeast, right?
So it would be.
It's nice and white.
See if I can get the camera to pick this up.
Nope. Yeah, I think I know where you mean. It's it's on the southeast corner.
Yeah, Lee, if you look at my map, I've zoomed in on it.
Oh, there you go.
Cross-south section.
Great. Rush Fire Department, surprisingly, they don't have any problem with it. Monroe County Planning has no comment at this time. Refer to local matter. And I talked with Dave Watson and the Conservation Board reviewed it and they have no comment at this time. Any questions from anybody else?
I'd like to note one other change from from the document that you have where it says that it's going to be wooden. Two members of the zoning board convinced me to switch to vinyl, so it's going to be vinyl.
Oh, okay. Huh, big box. I have a question. If you're going to enclose the hot tub, how come you got the fence on the east side?
What do you mean?
Isn't that where the hot tub's going?
The hot tub will be between the eastern couple of panels and the house.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not sure why my diagram doesn't include where the hot tub's going.
All right, I just thought I'd ask. Any, any questions from the audience? With that, I'll close public hearing 2020 dash 04Z. Poll the board.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Herman?
Hi.
Karen Hattrick?
Hi. The next one is 2020 dash 06Z. Tom McShane requesting an area variance for 770 Honey Falls, Five Points Road, Honey Falls. It's actually mailing address Honey Falls, which is actually in Rush, New York, 1447. So allowing a 10-foot offset. Is Mr. Shane with us?
He was going to call in.
I do not see a Mr. Shane.
What's that?
I do not see a Mr. Shane.
I do not either. And I gave him my cell phone number in case he couldn't get through. And he has not called.
Let me get him right here. Yeah.
Should we call him?
Yeah, yep.
What is it?
Mr. Shane? Lee Hattrick, zoning board? That's okay. That's fine. You're requesting a 10-foot offset for a, is it 38 by 40 pole barn? Okay, I pasted off one of the questions I had.
Chair, Chair, Lee.
Feet back.
Can someone get Lee's attention?
Okay, because I couldn't read on the map the actual distance.
Lee, can can he call into the number? Because there's no, no one can hear anything he's saying.
Oh, okay.
Do you have the number? Tom, could you call in?
Yep, I gotta get a pass. Hold on.
Okay.
Yes. Let me go to the left side. Sorry.
All right.
Because the number I give is a number.
I'm in a fast today. I apologize.
Mm-hmm.
I can't believe it. All right.
One, six, four, six. Five, 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 eight. Eight, six, five, six.
Okay.
Yep. Just call that one I got. Okay. While we're waiting for his call, I did drive back and take a look at the sign, okay? Yeah, it's it's almost a little over 600 feet off the road. There is a house out front, has a barn that sits way back. There's probably three or four pole barns in that jungle vicinity. It does have what's that? Yeah, yeah. He does have a couple of affidavits here. From 780 Honey Falls with Five Points Road, 775 Honey Falls, Five Points Road. Is that the Gary family? It's kind of hard for me to read that one. And Leonardo at 800 Honey Falls, Five Points. Yeah, I don't even have them. Yeah, 741, 750. One, two, three, four, five.
Okay, so the ID number is.
Yeah, so we have pretty much, I think that's about all five neighbors in the neighborhood.
675, 1484. Okay, yep.
Yeah, it's a flag lot. The house is 700 feet off the road. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because there's a yeah, there's a leach field. I know I did see there's part of a leach field there and then a well right in that vicinity. Yeah, pole barn we would like put put up cannot be behind the house through the leach field being located in a place on the lot where we cannot travel over and put a driveway over it to get to the pole barn. There are flag lots, 700 feet back. Be difficult this new construction and there are already several pole barns in the neighborhood, which there are. And it is, I mean, it is a self-created hardship, but. Was he going to call in?
Yeah, he called. I don't see him anywhere, but he's calling again. Hello? Yes. Oh, my goodness. Okay, so the cast with us, 14543. Yes. All right, that's okay, bye. He should be in any second. We should have the jeopardy of the point. We should have the jeopardy of the point. Oh, I hear something.
Vicki, is somebody trying to check in?
No. You'll hear a doorbell ring. There it goes.
Yep.
There he is.
Perfect.
Hello?
How are we doing today?
Oh, I apologize, guys. I'm at a runoff at a company that had a problem, and I just didn't look at the time. I am so sorry. I realize your time is valuable. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We'll allow it this time.
Thank you, sir.
Don't let it happen again.
I won't, I promise.
Yeah, I see you've pretty much got every neighbor in the, in the neighborhood to sign off.
Yes, sir. Everybody had a house there right now. The gentleman building, which has been very good to me and all that stuff, I, he wasn't physically available to do that with.
Okay. All right. We read it. We read that you're over 600 feet back. I read into record some of the reasons why you can't position it anyplace else.
Yes, sir.
You also have eight neighbors here that said they don't have a problem with it. Conservation Board said that they don't have a problem. The fire department approved it, and planning, dead. Yeah, they referred it to a local matter.
Yes, sir. I saw that come over on email today.
Does anybody else have any more questions?
Lee, what was the reason that it can't be positioned closer to the house?
Pardon me?
What was the reason why it couldn't be positioned closer to the house?
There's the configuration of the flag lot, and there's a leach field and a septic.
The leach field is on the other side of the house, isn't it?
Yeah, no, yes, yes, it is. Excuse me, Lee, I apologize for interrupting, but it's, my well is in that same corner. And I could come forward and move it back some, but I do have the water lines for the well going toward the house, and it would possibly be in the way of that.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Close the public hearing of 2020-06C. Will you poll the board?
Mr. Anderson?
Right.
Mr. Brew? Mr. Herman?
Hi.
Mr. Glass?
Hi.
Chair Hetrick?
Hi. Okay. Is there any more discussion on application 2020-02Z? The Seville Temple? Any other comments? Would you read the motion, Mr. Anderson?
Unmute. Rich, can you unmute yourself? There we go.
Okay. This will be the resolution, yeah?
Yes.
This will be a resolution, Town of Rush, Zoning Board of Appeals, on application 2020-02Z for an area variance. Whereas the zoning board of appeals of the Town of Rush, the zoning board received the application 2020-02Z for an area variance. The applicant submitted by Larry Hedder, agent for the 3D Temple. The applicant requesting a variance from the maximum height of 35 feet, set forth in the zoning law of the Town of Rush. The zoning law proposed construction of the new temple, the temple building, associated steeple with certain heights of property located at 6970 and 6980 East River Road, Rush, New York, the property. And whereas the property is located in R30 district, and whereas the proposed height, the staple for the temple building is 65 feet, and the proposed ridge height of the temple building is approximately 41 feet. And whereas the proposed steeple is not subject to the 35-foot maximum height requirement, the zoning section of the 120-5 decides maximum height as the elevation of the highest point of the structure of upgrade, excluding such structures as church steeple. And therefore, variance is not required for the proposed steeple. And whereas the proposed ridge height of the temple building does not comply with the maximum height requirement set forth in section 120-18D of the zoning law, and the applicant therefore seeks an area variance to allow for construction at the top of the building at its proposed height. And whereas the zoning board, the map, diagrams, other material, prepared to submit by the applicant with respect to the application, and whereas a public hearing for this application was scheduled, notice posted as required by law. And whereas all persons at the hearing desiring to speak as a matter were heard, so far as plans were set, those statements were considered by the zoning board. And whereas June 11th, 2020, the zoning board adopted resolution determining the project not present such significant adverse environmental impact, initiating a negative declaration under Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law, and 6 NYCRR, Part 7, 617, collectively referred to as a secret. Now therefore, on consideration by the zoning board of the application and other materials submitted by the applicant, the zoning board had been given, submitted documentation, documentation due consideration, being resolved that pursuant to the criteria set forth under Section 267-B of the Town Law, and Section 120-68 of the zoning law. The zoning board determines that the applications approved, applicants entitled to heights varies to miss construction of the temple building with a ridge height of 41 feet, based upon the following findings of fact. One, granting area variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The temple building will be constructed in residential areas on property that has been used in attempted purposes for the past 20 years. And such use is permitted by special permit, which is tantamount to finding that the use will not have a desirable effect on the surrounding community. The temple building will be set back approximately 385 feet of East River Road, and there is an existing cell tower located near the property with a height of approximately 150. Therefore, granting a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Two, benefit of constructing the temple building was as designed and not be realized without granting an area variance. Without an area variance, the applicant would have to redesign the temple building, which was thoughtfully designed following traditional Hindu architecture to facilitate religious worship. The temple building would be constructed at lower height, but lowering the height would frustrate the purpose of the traditional Hindu architecture. Number three, requested area variance is not substantial. Section 120-18D of the zoning law requires a maximum height structure, ready structure 35 feet in any zoning district. The ridge height of the temple building is approximately 41 feet. Therefore, the request of variance results in a deviation from the required height of only 20%. Additionally, other churches located elsewhere in the town have comparable ridge heights and steeple heights, such as St. Joseph's Church in 1209 Rush, West Rush Road, as set forth. There is an existing cell tower near the property with a height of approximately 150 feet tall. Additionally, the steeple portion of the temple building is not subject to the maximum height requirement of the zoning law, and a variance is not required for the height of the steeple. Number four, requested area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. The temple building will be set back approximately 385 feet from East River Road, and the height of the temple building is significantly less than the existing cell tower that is located near the property. The footprint of the temple building is small compared to the size of the lot, and was demonstrated by a balloon test conducted by the applicant. There were existing mature trees that provide adequate screening of the temple building of neighboring properties, despite the height of the proposed temple building. Number five, the alleged difficulty was self-created because the applicant knew the property is located in an R30 residential district. When it was designed, the new temple building, and there was a height restriction for structures in all zones. This fact does not conclude the granting of an area variance. Considering of the other factors, the benefit of the applicant in granting the area of variance outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. And it is further resolved in taking into consideration five factors. The zoning board finds that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood or community, and the variance requested in the application are the minimum variance that should be granted to preserve and protect the purity, character of the neighborhood, and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And it is further resolved that the application is granted as submitted, subject to the following conditions. Point one, all construction is subject to site plan review by the Town of Rush Planning Board. And two, to mitigate natural impacts from mountain lighting to neighboring properties, all mountain lights will comply with the requirement set forth in Article 4 of the zoning law of the Town of Rush. Including but not limited to the heights requirement for mounted luminaries and lighting fixtures will be oriented and shielded to prevent any light spill onto neighboring properties. And three, construction being completed in accordance with the Town Code, NAPACO building, fire prevention codes. And it is further resolved that notice of this resolution shall be filed and circulated in the extent required by any applicable procedure of the Town Code of the Town of Rush and/or any relevant statute or regulation. The adoption of the foregoing resolution is moved by Richard Anderson, circulated by Lee Hetrick, and duly put to a vote. Which results are as follows.
Mr. Brew? Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Herman?
Hi.
Mr. Glass?
Hi.
Chair Hetrick?
Hi. Done. The next one is application 2020-0...
Thank you.
Ann Stewart.
It's dead.
Did we lose, did we lose someone? Laptop died?
Yeah. We can share.
Hey, Lee?
Yeah.
Can you talk right into your device, whatever you're looking at?
Yeah, you gotta talk into the microphone. Having a hard time hearing you.
All right, on the application of Ann Stewart, 2020-3Z, in light of some of the questions that were asked tonight, I also asked a question of the state about a drainage easement and a utility easement on that property. And I have not heard back from them yet, either the Water Authority or any of the utility companies. John's gonna send some pictures and stuff like that. So with that, I'm going to table the Stewart decision until the August zoning meeting. An application 2020-04Z on 50 Stony Brook Road, Rush, New York. Generally, as a rule, somebody will come out and take a look at that and look at the site and stuff like that. Would you have any objections to that?
I, I don't.
Oh.
Parents do, but I don't.
No, I, I have no objection to that.
Well, who lives there?
My daughter.
Do we have the right, let me find this. I gotta find the stuff here.
We want to make sure we have the correct contact information for the person that we'll be meeting with.
Yeah, in the application, there's a letter of authorization to act on her behalf, and all the names are contained in that, in that letter.
Okay, I have 585-507-3048.
That's my, my number.
Okay, but if I called that number, could we set up a time for somebody to come out and take a look at it?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, anytime good or anytime bad?
You know, we don't got much going on these days.
Okay. All right, thank you. Probably, well, this week is almost over with. Probably sometime next week, give you a call in early evening or something like that, if that's okay? Thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem.
So that on my table to next month. Next, we have 2020-05Z, David Flash for fence variance at 77 West Rush Road.
So for this one, Chair, Chairman Hetrick, I'm gonna, this is the first time I'm gonna do a virtual recusal during the deliberation, so bear with me. David, would you mind shutting your camera off and staying on mute so the board can process what it wants to process? Very good. All right, you may continue. He's, he's virtually recused.
Okay.
John, do I have to put him in a waiting room or anything, or is he good?
He's good. If he's shut off and muted, he's effectively out, so...
All right.
The board, the board can do whatever it needs to do in his absence.
Even though he can still hear us?
Yeah, it'd be as if he's sort of standing in the rear of the room and listening, so having him step away from the table, the virtual table.
All right.
All right, as long as we're doing things right. Does anybody have any questions over that one? Brad?
No questions.
All right. Do you want to read the motion?
Sure. Very good. Whereas, this is a flash motion, there is a, just an amendment that'll be made in there that I'll note. Chairman Hetrick, it's regarding the length of the fence. It was noted as being 30 foot when it seems though it's actually going to be 25 foot or five sections.
Right.
So whereas the zoning board of appeals of the Town of Rush, the zoning board received application 2020-05Z submitted by David Flash, the applicant requesting a height limitation variance for construction of a six-foot fence by 25 foot or five sections long on a property located at 77 Rush, West Rush Road, Rush, New York, the property. And whereas the property is located in the R30 district as set forth in the zoning law of the Town of Rush. And whereas the proposed location of the six-foot high fence does not comply with the code that no fence shall be more than six feet in height at the rear of the home or building in any zoning district. No fence or portion of a fence forward of the rear building line or the rear building line extended shall be more than four foot feet in height requirement. requirement set forth in chapter fifty-eight dash six, the zoning law. And whereas, the zoning board has examined application twenty twenty dash zero five Z requesting a height variance to construct the six-foot high fence and the maps, diagrams, and other materials that were submitted with this application. And whereas, a public hearing on this application was scheduled, and notice was posted as required by law. And whereas, all persons at the hearing desiring to speak on the matter were heard, all correspondence was read, and those statements were considered by the zoning board. And now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board determines that this is a type two action exemption, exempt, I'm sorry, type two action exempt from seeker review pursuant of section six seventeen point five, subsection C, subsection twelve of Title Six of the New York State Code of Rules and Regulations, which includes granting of height restriction variances as a type two action. And then it's seconded the motion on the board, the board polled. Be it resolved that pursuant to the criteria set forth under section twenty-six eighty-seven dash B, the town law and section fifty-six, fifty-eight dash six, the town code, the zoning board determines that the applicant is entitled to a height variance for fencing to be six-foot high forward of the rear building base, based on the following information. Number one, the granting of the fence height variance will not produce any undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Based on the plans provided by the applicant, the proposed fence forward of the rear building will not exceed six foot in height and is placed per the applicant's site plan. Neighbors have no objection to the six-foot fence height in the proposed location. The benefit of the six-foot, item number two, I'm sorry, the benefit of the six-foot height fence will provide the privacy that the applicant is looking to achieve as an enclosure around a newly proposed sauna slash hot tub. Due to the existing site grades, a four-foot fence would not provide the desired privacy. Number three, the requested area variance is not substantial. Section fifty-eight dash six of the zoning code requires that fencing forward of the rear building line be four foot in height maximum. The applicant is looking to increase that height restriction by two feet. The, item number four, the requested fence height increase variance will not have any adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The proposed fence location cannot be seen by the neighbors to the east or west due to the house blocking the view facing west or due to the existing trees, brush, and undergrowth facing east along the property line. Item number five, while the requested fence height for privacy was self-created, this fact does not preclude the granting of the height variance. In consideration of all the four factors, the benefit of the app, the benefit to the applicant in granting the variance outweighs the possible detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. And it is further resolved that application twenty twenty dash zero five Z is granted as submitted, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the fencing proposed in the application shall be no higher than six feet tall. And number two, that the applicant must see, must meet any other applicable town building and inspection requirements. Someone like to second the motion and board the, have the board be polled?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Prue? Mr. Herman?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Dave, you can come back.
Yep, you can come back in. There you go.
The next one is twenty twenty dash six D, Thomas Sheen requesting an area variance for seven seventy Honey Falls Five Point Road, Honey Falls, New York, one four five seven two, allowed a ten-foot offset. Any comments on this?
He?
Any questions?
He lost the reception, and I told him he would call him after the meeting.
This might have unmuted mine, sorry. Okay, mute me then.
Hey, Lee?
Yeah.
Isn't the zip code one four four seven two?
Yeah, his mailing address is Honey Falls.
Yeah, well, you said one four five seven two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
One four four seven two.
I just wanna feel purposeful tonight.
Okay. Any comment from the audience? Johnny?
Sheen motion, Board Member John Prue made a motion. Whereas the zoning board of appeals of the Town of Rush, the zoning board has examined application twenty twenty zero six Z submitted by Thomas and Karen Sheen, the applicant, of seven seventy Honey Falls Five Point Road, Rush, New York, one four five four three, property located in the R thirty district, requesting a side setback variance for the proposed pole barn located near the west side boundary line, and the maps and diagrams and other materials were submitted to the application. Whereas, the property is located in an R thirty district, set forth in the zoning law of Rush, the zoning law, and whereas applicant, application twenty twenty zero six Z was submitted by Thomas and Karen Sheen, seven seventy Honey Falls Five Point Road, Rush, New York, one four five four three, requesting a variance, a side setback requirement for structure of only twenty-five feet, as a setback in the code of Rush, one two zero is one nine, described, described in the maps and diagrams submitted in the application, and whereas the public hearing on this application was scheduled and notice was posted as required by law. And whereas all persons at the hearing desiring to speak on the matter were heard, all correspondence were read, and those statements were considered by the board. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeal determines that this type of action, type two action, is exempt from seeker of a review of the previous section six seven, six seventeen point five, seen day twelve of Title Six of New York State Code of Rules and Regulations, this is granting individual setbacks and line-line grants, and it is further resolved that pursuant to the criteria set forth under section two six seven B of the town law and one twenty dash nineteen of the zoning law, the zoning board determines that the applicant is entitled to a variance based on the following. One, the placement of the pole barn consists with the neighborhood and approximately other pre-existing buildings in the neighborhood. And being setback over five hundred feet from the road as a result will not determine detriment to any nearby property. There will be no undesirable change in character of the neighborhood. Neighbors have no objection to the proposed location of the pole barn. Two, the benefits sought by the applicant do not be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue because of configuration and dimensions of the property. The pole barn cannot feasibly be constructed on a different location on the property. Three, the requested area variance is substantial. While the variance requested is sixty percent, sixty percent deviation from the zoning law, the variance is not substantial given that the pole barn itself will be set back over five hundred feet from the road. Four, the requested side back variance will not have an adverse effect, an impact to the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The construction of pole barn as well will result of the variance will not result in any impact or environmental conditions such as raining, traffic circulation, noise, or other effects. Five, while the request side back variance for the pole barn was self-created, this fact does not preclude granting of the side back variance. In consideration of other four factors, the benefit to the applicant in granting variance outweighs the possible detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. And it is further resolved that taking, taking consideration of fine fact that the zoning board finds that the benefit to the applicant outweighs this detriment to the neighborhood and community, and that the various requests in the application are the minimum variance that should be granted in order to preserve protective character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And it is further resolved that the application twenty twenty zero six Z is granted, granted and subjected, submitted, subject to the following conditions. The pole barns proposed through the application shall be no closer than ten feet from the west property line. No work will commence on the pole barn until a building project is obtained with the Town of Rush. The applicant must meet any other applicable town building inspection requirement.
I have one question, and it probably is because I couldn't hear it very well. The sub item three on the substantial, did you say it is or is not substantial? I just wanna make sure you, it was, if I heard it correctly, I think I heard it is. I just wanna make sure if it is or is not. I think it was the first sentence. Okay. I couldn't, I couldn't hear it, and I, that was my, that was my only comment. Okay.
Hold the board?
Mr. Prue?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Herman?
Aye.
Mr. Flass?
Aye.
Chair Hetrick?
Aye. And that will conclude tonight's agenda. But there's one other thing for board members. I was asked about if we thought there should be any changes, updates, or whatever to our applications. Any comments? You can help me on this one. It said here that it submits thirteen copies, and was that changed to twenty-two?
Twenty-one.
The twenty-one copies. Okay. Okay, the only question I have, it seems to be, it's just a little, I, if I submit an application off the website, and I email it to you, where does the twenty-one copies come from?
Who's talking? Is that Shelley? Sorry. Yeah, nobody can hear that, I just.
Oh, the question was that they're pulling the applications off the website, and now takes twenty-one copies, and we're getting people that are sending them in, they're emailing them or whatever, and they're thinking that it should be processed, but they haven't paid yet, and they haven't provided the twenty-one copies. There seems to be some confusion. Right, I understand that, but didn't we have an applicant recently that put it in and wanted to make the deadline and couldn't understand why she didn't? One, she didn't pay, she hadn't paid yet, number one, and she hadn't submitted all of the copies. She just had the form, okay? I just, maybe something ought to be a little more clear as the process of, you have to submit it, pay for it with the copies, you can't email it, or whatever.
Ask for it to be emailed.
Right, you know, so there seemed to be a little confusion there, I've noticed. But that would be my only comment on the applications and the forms.
Lee, again, we couldn't hear, did Shelley respond to that? We didn't hear what the comment was back from her.
Pardon me?
We didn't hear Shelley's response.
Yeah, we didn't hear Shelley's response.
Yeah, it basically is what it boiled down to, is they pull it off the website, and then they electronically send it and automatically think that it's done, you know, without the twenty-one copies and pain and stuff like that.
So, is there a special note on the online application that states that the fee and the copy still have to be presented before it's reviewed, or?
On the latest version, yes.
Okay. Can't hear her, Lee.
She said on the.
On the latest version, yes.
On the latest version, yes, is that what, is that what I heard? Can?
That was the only comment that I had on them. That was a request that we were asked to review it, and that's all I came up with.
If I, this is Amber Corbin. If I can just add, the forms are, what were they, John, to two thousand and three?
They are seventeen years, they are about seventeen years old, I think.
They're, they're, they're very old, and we're looking to update the forms. The planning board's been working on theirs, and so, Brad, those are things that we would like to put on the forms, but we wanted to get your input as far as the direction of electronic as well as hard copies, things like that, so the applicants do understand better what their obligations are before they can get on Lee's agenda.
Right, yeah, that's, like I said, that's the only thing that I noticed, and I happened to be here, and an applicant wanted to know why they weren't on the agenda, and she electronically sent it. Well, she didn't pay, and she didn't send seventeen copies, so I don't know whether she misunderstood it, or, but that's the only thing that I ever heard or saw.
And one of the things that, so, Councilwoman Corbin and I have been working on sort of updating a lot of these processes, and one of the things that we raised as a question for each of the boards is, is, we, uniformity would be desired in terms of allowing the staff and the clerks to be able to process for both boards sort of in the same, in the same format, and so numbers of copies and things like that. Twenty-one copies, I think, was historically done because they would use a hard copy, would get disseminated to everybody, you know, all the agencies, the county, the town attorney, the town engineer, and a lot, a lot of this now has gone digital, so the county doesn't need a hard copy, I certainly, I don't need one, and others, I think, would prefer the electronics, so that was just one of the things, by way of example, we discussed. But if there's anything, you know, in terms of your process where, you know, you notice something that has come up repeatedly or over time that you'd like to tweak in terms of having the application be a little more clear, I think that was the genesis of the councilwoman's request in terms of trying to update this, so that it's a little more user-friendly for twenty twenty, saves the board a little bit of work if there's some issue that can be dealt with in the application that's not adequate, so those sorts of things. And I'm happy to provide input, too, if you have any questions.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, when the board passed that, where we could streamline something that was so obvious, remember, like the variance setbacks for older homes that didn't meet the setback, you know, that streamlined it, that was, that was good, so. But if anybody else has any other questions or anything? If not, I'll close the meeting. Hold the board?
Mr. Prue?
Yes. Hello, Brad?
Oh, I didn't hear my, I'm sorry, I didn't hear my name, yes.
We're closing, we're closing the meeting.
Aye.
Did she say my name? I can't hear her. Aye, if she said my name.
And I hope everybody has a good night.
All right, you too. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.